All right, we'll pick back up where we left off. So we were on the line item with Salt Creek Recreation.
Correct. So in your booklet, in their narrative, she details what the monies are to be spent for. This is an increase from last year. By it looks like around $5,000.
My understanding is they closed the pool. Does anybody know for sure if that's the case right now?
I'm pretty sure they did.
Midwest Edgerton.
Because that's been a, like a mayor's meeting point for the last year or so, how bad a shape that was. But I guess with that being said, did, was there a change to the budget, being as they're not needing to maintain that or run it anymore, or did they?
I don't know. That's kind of what I'm wondering about, so, but I don't know, because that's...
So they've dropped it 9,000 from the 21, 22 request.
From 21, 22.
No, revised.
Yeah. It's 15. Now they're back up 20, but the pool's closed.
For the rec center liability insurance and admin cost.
Do they have any kids living out there?
Yeah. Yeah, they got kids that go to school out there and kids that come into school here.
But they didn't ex... What, do you have their pool expense due to some problems?
I will in just a minute.
I think when it comes to pool, the biggest question I have is NCDC, did they pick up the cost of maintaining and running that pool?
That's what they've been going back and forth with. But this is, this is for the rec center itself, that's not where the pool is, so...
But that's part of what they're asking for, because it says they decided to close the pool permanently due to maintenance issues and cost of repairs.
I don't see the pool on here. They don't talk, they don't talk about the pool at all on here as far as their cost that comes up with the 20,500 they have. There we go. Rec center expenses, monitors, Indian persons, payroll taxes, administration. So, pool's not kept enlisted on here, so... Yeah.
So they're currently sitting at 11, 8. What it's showing in your books, but also what it's showing on Tracy's computer. So, if we did 15, that would put them above what they expended so far this year and, but still, it'd keep them flat from last year, basically. I don't know how that affect their, if it affect any of their numbers here. I mean, a lot of it looks like liabilities, insurance is 5,500. Maybe the bookkeeper, that's 100, only 150 a month, though.
Well, it's 400 hours worth of people being there to watch over everybody.
Right.
That's amazing.
That's a huge...
Pretty much have to do that, or else they can't have it open, so...
So what do they want, 20,000?
Yeah.
So they have any way of paying for some of this? 10% to 2,000 bucks? Because we're being asked to pay 100%, right?
So, wait a minute.
I think we ought to just cover it.
Probably should cut them down early and not ask it for anything compared to anybody else.
I think that's important. And we also are contributing approximately $850,000 for water line stuff. I, I don't feel real strongly that we can't cover it. I just would like to, if not this year, then in future years, see them figure out some way, even if it's a real modest contribution, because we don't do this with other towns or cities, right?
They're pretty much losing all their businesses up there. I mean, they've only got one, they've only got a couple of major businesses that are still operational, so a lot of their revenue sources have really gone down.
Isn't this all for the children, this deal?
Yeah, it is.
Where are they at right now?
How much have they expended? The 11,837.
Oh, I got you. Then I would say leave it at the 15 that we gave them last year. It's 2,500 each, but truly, if the businesses are leaving, I'm sure the families are going with them.
No, they're just shutting down. Their whole businesses, they're just shutting down.
Well, I believe there needs to be skin in the game by both of them, and keeping it where it is, even 1,000 thrown in there, I don't even know. I mean, I'd, I'd say 2,500 each, leave it at 15,000 where it was at. At the end of the day, if they end up getting to a point where they're going through the funds relatively quick, it looks like they're paying for monitors anyways, and it's by hour. So, they would just have to adjust their hours accordingly if they can't come up with additional money to put in there. Or volunteers, yeah. That's where I'm at with it.
I think we should just a little bit, because we all recognize that payroll in particular has gone up, insurance has gone up. So, I'd, I'd pose, what is, 1,500 each Midwest, 1,500 Edgerton? That gets us to what, 17,500? I don't know. What, what do you guys think down there?
I can, I can live with that. I mean, it's not, it's just not that much money, additional money that we're talking about, so...
Not much money overall, and everybody else, we've got service mostly children and that kind of thing, and they're out in the far end of the county. I don't think we think they have any importance, or they're good enough.
I mean, they don't have...
Not just 1,000, 2,000.
I don't care what the number is, but I'd like to see them contribute just a little bit. I'd like to see us come up just a little bit.
Well, the only thing I'm going to add to that is that they've expended almost 12,000, but they still have 3,000 left for roughly a week and a half. So, I think that we're fine at the 15, my opinion.
Well, it shouldn't be penalized because of the pool. I don't know, I don't know. The person who paid the request, I'm guessing they, I don't think they're trying to chill with it in any sense, really.
Thing about it is, liability and...
15,000 twice?
I'm, I'm still with Peter, I think we ought to give, call it like 17,500.
Probably with the 17,500, but I think it's...
We did, 17,500.
Three of them say 17,500.
Can we get 17,700 on the far end?
Nope. Too late, you already said 17,500. Sold.
Well, and for anybody watching this or listening to this, you know, it's not like we're trying to pick on them. It's maybe next year they can explain a little bit more, and maybe we'll land in a different place. But I, I hear your, Jim, I hear your point.
Well, just two things about it. I mean, it's skin in the game. I mean, you can't just come in here and expect it to be 100% fi, or 100% funded to you, you gotta do something. And secondly, you haven't even spent the, the money that's been allocated from last year. So, we're giving more money when, what they were given, they're still off the mark by about 3 grand, so...
But if you add a couple of zeros to that, maybe 3 zeros to that, then we're kind of in the same conversation you're having with some of the elected officials and some of the other folks that are quote, "giving the money back," which isn't necessarily accurate, where they're, where they weren't expending things. So I think it's just kind of looking at the numbers a little more closely, and I hope what he does in future years.
Yeah. Okay, Day Reporting was the next one.
Mr. Chairman, the county legal department reached out to Day Reporting, Alcohol and Drug Testing, Inc. He gave us an estimate cost per person. Obviously, he doesn't have a solid number, because it's based on number of individuals. So he, Mr. Harley believes it's a 1,200 per month average is appropriate, but in looking at the expenditures for this current fiscal, the legal department thought it should be closer to 1,100 a month, therefore being the estimated annual cost of the 130,500.
And what's that for?
Alcohol and drug testing.
Because after the rec center, I've got in my packet the letter concerning your...
Look at your spreadsheet, Mr. Laird, sorry. There's not a narrative for these next couple ones, as they are in contracts with us.
Anybody have any questions on Day Reporting?
Okay. The next one, juvenile JDC contract. So, that contract was, is a 36-month contract. It was began, began July 2021. It increases by the CPI index every 12 months. The calculation that the county legal department came up with, the CPI likely increase would be around 7%, not 8. So that $2 million number reflects a 7% increase based on the CPI index. And that is a contract.
So is that signed by all the parties, and that's what we're bound to do?
I would say yes, Commissioner Laird.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, and our clerk, the detention contract, so who is that contract with? That's not the one for the Hall of Justice, that's not our power store?
No, it's with Cornerstone.
Juvenile Detention.
The Juvenile Detention Center, running the facility, Cornerstone.
So the operator, the operator of, so that's their contract.
Correct.
Basically labor services.
Correct.
Thank you.
That, that doesn't have anything to do with the Youth Crisis Center, does it?
No, sir, no. Separate, which we'll be addressing that shortly.
Okay.
All right, moving on to misdemeanor housing. Again, that's a contract, and the objective was to make space available in a detention center by decreasing the number of misdemeanor inmates. It's been 40, that was the, to keep it at 40, or the contract amount at 40, excuse me, is under the recommendation from the county legal department.
So the only question I have on that is, they want to leave it at 40, but expended in 2020 was not quite 3 grand, and then 5 grand, and now this year, 6,500. We're not even coming close to that 40.
That is correct. It seems like we have a problem either being billed for services rendered. I, I don't know what happens with that.
I can ask Heather, next evening, tomorrow afternoon.
Should that be adjusted, though? I mean, even if you adjust it in half, you're not even, they're not even hitting half a half.
Yeah, this, this clearly seems one to adjust unless there's a contract that has the possibility of not exceeding number, or something like that.
So, the cost is $40 a day for the first seven days if unemployed, otherwise it's $30, and $30 a day thereafter. So, either the program is not being utilized within the court system as a sentencing option, and inmates are being remanded to the detention center, or they are placed on supervised, unsupervised probation, and released pursuant to those conditions. So, I would say as a whole, maybe the program's not being utilized to its full capacity.
So can we reduce that by half? Huh?
I would, unless we're obliged to keep it at 40.
Is everybody good to move that down to 20?
Yeah, subject to the attorney saying we have to.
Okay.
But I will, I'll ask tomorrow.
And with that, I, I guess the contract expires June 30th, and optional to renew.
So I hear zero. Cut it, cut it all the way down.
Is there a line of response on that?
Is there? Have you got anything in, in our packet on, on that?
On the misdemeanor, no, that's this information I gleaned from the county attorney's office. Again, it was up in the legal department. It wasn't an actual request that came from the division, so that's why there's not a narrative.
Who, who's that contract with?
Community Education Centers.
And, and we expire?
Isn't that CAC, it used to be CAC, correct? Is my understanding?
No, it's community, no, that's CAC, Community Alternative Center, and it's Community, it's, now it's Reentry Center.
No. Do I? No.
Because if it expires in 10 days, I mean...
I can, let me, I can get a copy.
Okay.
But it'll be on paper, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get that. So, Mr. Chairman, bring it to 20, or hold for more?
Uh, 20, but let's hold until we can look at the contract itself.
Okay. Youth Crisis Center does have a narrative. Initial, their initial request was the 50,000, and then they came in, what, a month or so ago, after the budget books had been completed, and asked for an additional 118,625 for the five bids. So that additional number is not included in this request. The only thing that's in your, on your worksheets currently is the 50,000, about $1,000 of their initial request.
So I just want to pass some information on, because I would agree with what they've asked for, but it's, I went over and talked to the judge about these kids that they're sending there, these juveniles, and they're not getting paid for that. And they've, they're taking up beds for the kids in youth crisis. And so they're having difficulties, because they're just not getting paid. So I went and asked the judge, she said, "Well, we have no budget, we're not authorized to pay for it. We thought," I always say the welfare department was paying for it, but they're not, nobody's paying for it. And they're having to handle it, because what's really happening is, instead of sending them to the jail, they're sending them to the Youth Crisis Center. So I, I don't think their request is inappropriate, their amended request.
I think the judge's request is inappropriate.
Well, they're not, they don't, yeah, they don't, they can't ethically get into the cost of these things. They're prohibited from that. And they, they weren't aware that nobody was being paid either. I kind of figured that was the issue, but, uh, let's see, I think it was David tried to get ahold of him, but he, she said she didn't get anything from him, so I don't know what happened there.
So this 118,625, this will be annual, my note indicates this will be expected to be an annual request?
That's my understanding, yes.
Now, they're also, as I understand it, they're trying to raise, I wrote down the number, 117,000 dollars for the group home fund? It's the other side, isn't it?
I don't believe so.
Well, they have one whole wing up there, Mr. Nicolason, that they need, they can't open, because they need, for staffing and all that, it's like about 136,000 a year. I think they've drained about every alternate source of money.
One of the things, just to consider, as a strategy frankly, to get more money out of the state, is to not fund all 118,625, because remember from the presentation, and that some of this is coming from the court, the state court system? If they don't get some of the funding from us, do they have a federal to go back to the state, and say they need to increase either their per day rates, or some other funding? I think it's a good cause, Commissioner Laird, I do, and it's not a lot of money, for what the value I think is.
Maybe we ought to help them for a year and have them see if they can do that. I don't know, I'm sure you've tried to get money out of the legislature before, and you might have done it, but it took four or five years. You've got these kids being put up there that shouldn't go to the detention center, and, but they're taking beds away from the children in crisis, which is the whole outline of that, and it's like, all these agencies don't have a connection. But I kind of figured what the judge's answer would be, when she told me, and didn't surprise me one bit, but it's an easy thing, say, "Well, I thought somebody else was giving them the money, and then somebody else isn't giving them the money." And I know when he was in here, he, he kept his budget at the same, and, but he was, he was hoping, I know, we'd give him more, so he made that amendment. But here again, it's for children, and if you go and visit the place, you'll, it'll tug on your heartstrings, I can tell you that much.
So, this is a problem being created by the state, by not funding again, and by the judges sentencing those kids to this facility that isn't really set up for it, while basically unfunded mandate now. It's dropped in the county's lap once again. I'd say we do it, fund it this year, and work on the legislatures. Art, I know Art and, I don't remember who the other one is, they're chairs of, of the judicial. We need to talk to them and explain what's going on. I know Art spun up on this. So, maybe we can work with them a little bit and try to get this solved, but I do know that the money that we spend here, if we can keep them out of the jail system, and provide that release, pressure release somewhere other than putting them in the jail, it'll save the county money in the long run, if we can get them turned around. I don't know how much turning around they get when they go up to JD, to the juvenile detention, or if they're just warehoused up there, but...
Here they have counselors and all kinds of stuff.
So, I'm not opposed to it for one year, and revisit it, and hopefully work with the state to try to solve this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be a little stronger, I agree with, just by what Commissioner Lom just said, would make it explicit that we're only going to fund this for one year, and we expect that the state will contribute more to this, either through the judiciary or some other branch, you know? But I, I think it's important, I think, I think this is, this is a really, this is a highlight in terms of the services and the quality of services that are provided in the community. So I think we do need to support it. So I think we ought to be clear about it, and for one year, not an annual, and we have more conversations.
You know, Mr. Nicolason, one of the things when I went up there and looked this over, there's no way they can open up that one pod, they have one whole pod, there's just nobody in it, and they, because they don't have the money to hire the people and everything. And I think he did say that's 136,000. And I don't know whether, who's, they've tried every which way to get money. And I don't know whether, who's, they've tried every which way to get money for that, and they haven't been able to do it. But that's 136,000 a year, um, so that they can, they can get their, get maximum use out of their building and everything else. So I don't know even what to say about that as well. They didn't ask for money for it, but that's always hanging out there. And I know they've worked their tails off trying to get money for that place. So I think this one year, give them the notice is great, and then see what happens. But it's a facility that needs to be up and running 100% in my opinion.
So what's the amount that we'd be adding to that 50?
118,625.
I think we need to take care of them.
So that would be a total of 168,625. You guys good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Next one was, uh, Nitrana County Conservation District.
They have a narrative following the...
Health Department contract?
We've already been through that one. That's the Health Department, CNFR contract. Yeah, it just goes up every fiscal?
Yep, every year that goes up just a bit.
What is it now?
22.
22. Bless you. Uh, the fair we did, community action, the library. So if we go all the way down to 9162, the principal, the interest, principal and interest payment on the detention center? I believe it, we're done with it in 25, fiscal '25. Um, so, actually, those are non, you know, negotiable. GAL expenses? For that, over there? Is that amount going to stay the same?
Yeah.
We don't have much choice on that, do we?
Well, but did we not, we didn't add in cleaning, or did we? Because we've over expended that line by 2,742 dollars.
Where are we at right now?
We've expended 27,742. I left the request at 25, because that number, we got a new expenditure, a new one, this, in June. Wasn't there a talk about cleaning or something? Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, there was.
Did we add that? I didn't think we did that. I didn't think, I didn't think we had to do that. Yeah, I didn't think we had to do the janitorial. They had to do that themselves. But their, their rates may have gone up too.
Let me run that account real quick and see what the issue is.
GAL. Guardia Madledum. They used to be in our office, and now they're over here.
My son got his wisdom teeth out this morning.
Seriously?
Well, there's 12 payments, so I'm not quite sure. Um, the first payment was 2,250, and every payment thereafter was 2,31750. You guys don't...
I wonder if they rent one up or something? Because that would have taken, that would take care of that.
27,74250.
I think we need to raise it up to 27, 28.
Well, how does the contract read? I mean, we pay, what, what do we?
Last one, I'm wondering.
If I remember, we're obligated to, to pay the rent.
Dave, do you want to look into that? See?
Huh?
Do you want to look into it, see why it went up?
We can find out. I mean, that's... Because we moved, because we are obligated.
Yeah, let's figure how, why the cost went up.
So what would, do you want to wait on this one, or?
Yeah, we can adjust it accordingly. But I agree, if there's something that's added in there that we're not responsible for, then we'll come back and leave it where it is. If it, if it's a rent that went up, then we'll adjust it. Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, the new account line, add valorum tax payment, that's due December of '23. So that's new. Any questions on that?
How much is that?
How mu, what, what?
Tax payment.
The amount?
Yeah.
97, told, the, just this fiscal, the new payment? 97,069.
97,000 what?
$69.25.
And we got that, because we took the money up front last year. So we have 10 years, 10 years to pay that back, is that right?
I don't have the, anyone in front of me?
What's that 4 million we got from the federal government?
Which 4 million?
We got 4 million, according to the...
That's PILT. PILT, Pay and Leave Taxes. That's what the federal government pays us.
And that, 300,000 more than our...
Well, it's in our estimate, in our estimate. We were going off the estimate, and then that's, that came in as higher than what the estimate was.
Yeah, 300 grand more.
Yeah. And that money is invested in this, haven't we, it's...
Yeah, because there's no, there's no interest on that money, so we took it up front.
Any other questions on that, Mr. Chairman?
I don't think so. Anybody?
Thanks, Commissioner. Um, the next one, does it say county road?
County roads.
There's a, there's a song named "County Roads," isn't there? Or is it "I'm alignment for the county"?
County roads.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
"I'm alignment for the county." You have, you actually got a voice, dude.
Okay, so on this, um, a lot of blank, or a lot of zeros. Um, these numbers are provided to me, to us, um, from Mr. Hagler. Now, if you will see on his narrative, he had a, a $2 million number on Circle Drive. So I took that out of this 24 request, because we paid that June 1st. It came out of this current fiscal. So the new county road fund number request is 3,537,866.
For Circle Drive?
Yes. So that's pretty easy on that one. Your next tab, equipment, or do you have any questions on the county road? Some of those are restricted funds, some are non-restricted funds. Um, I tried to notate that by the NR after the name.
What has we expended so far?
For what, what? Let me get there real quick. I have to switch from screen to screen, I apologize. 9304?
Set to 160.
You got to find it first, Commissioner.
163,9578.
For grab.
He's expended 190,743.
How much?
190,743.
But is that, the 750 I grabbed, is that for county road, for, uh...
Just grab, let it put wherever we need it. Tracy, or can we carry over that additional amount from last year into this budget that you had?
We won't. It will, it will just sit in that fund, so it'll be available.
Well, that, I, that's basically what I'm at, is...
Because when we go to do our bingo sheet, and you'll know more what that is later, we're going to take out the county road fund out of our, I mean, it shows, is in our request, but it's going to come out of that bottom line number, because those are restricted and non-restricted, but they're for road funds. We're going to take out the lake money, and we're going to take out one cent. And if you look at Nick's spreadsheet, you know, it coincides with what he has given you for revenue, so... So any other questions on the road fund? Okay. Is equipment your next tab?
It is.
So I think we kind of went over that, but if you want to have further discussions, then now's the time, or, we have a few, um, departments that are included on this that we haven't hit yet, so we can always come back to this, or do it as we discuss those individual departments.
Let's come back to that.
I will tell you, um, the one we could discuss right now would be the equipment hardware, the 7151. So that line right there is copies, we lease our copiers. And so that's the copy cost, and then there is money in there, 54,000 for copiers, and they're on a rotation schedule. And that is included in your narratives behind that spreadsheet. Um, Eileen has a really, has a very strict rotation schedule on these copiers.
When, every four or five years, is that what I read?
I'm not sure of the timeframe, Commissioner Laird. It's kind of looking more like a, yeah, about a three or four-year schedule, looking at the purchase dates of the one that she's proposing to replace. And your sheet in your book says Nitrana County Government Pricing Schedule. It should be the second to last page behind that 39 worksheet, Excel spreadsheet. It's labeled 7151. And this current fiscal, we have expended that, over expended that line due to copies, um, which I'm going to say relate to the BOE. Additional copies. Any questions on that?
Any questions on that?
I believe your next tab is projects and grants?
It is.
So projects and grants, um, these totals, I, most of these, the majority of these are sheriff's office grants. So I will get with Melissa over at the sheriff's office, and we will go through expended, and she will, uh, present me, provide these numbers to me. The one that is a actual request, if you will, from the Children's Advocacy Project, excuse me, and that's account line 925600534. And that request is $45,000. And there is a narrative in your book.
Is that what they got last year?
They received 40,000.
Chairman, was the best, they didn't use any of their funding last year?
This current fiscal?
Yeah.
They've expended it all.
Okay. Did they apply again?
I'm sorry?
Did that grant, we're doing that one again?
They have requested 45 this fiscal.
From us?
Correct.
No, 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 uh, 9280, sorry, I'm bouncing forward.
Oh, that, I have no idea. That's up to you folks to, no one has contacted... That's up to you folks to, no one has contacted me regarding that grant.
Okay.
I did not put a number in there, so...
Have they ever taken the money? It looks like we approved it once, but it doesn't look like it's ever expended.
Oh, let me look real quick. They did not, um, if they did, it was not posted to this account line.
That's why I was asking.
Justin's typically pretty big that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who would we be paying? Who would the vendor be?
EDB.
Who?
Economic Development Board.
Without having the vouchers right in front of me, I can't tell from the limited information I have on the computer. According to my records, anything that we've paid them is the Elkhorn Valley lease. Doesn't say anything about the sponsorship.
And then 9284, I was thinking that was, would be a line that where if we wanted to pay for the statute base, that would be a good spot for it is, do you have a better, do we have a better spot for it?
I can put, that's fine, I can put it there, because it just hasn't been used, which is not a big deal. As long as we're...
Where, what's easiest for you?
Fairgrounds.
Okay.
Let's do fairgrounds then.
So on the, the sponsorship, on the proud to host the best, or what are we thinking there, or...
Well, they talked about 25, again, last meeting I attended. Did you hear anything else from Justin or anybody, Dave?
Say again.
Last meeting we attended, they were talking 25,000. Have you heard anything from?
I have not heard anything, but we've got that meeting on Monday for that budget, so, on the 26. So I have not heard it.
I'll give Justin a call.
I haven't heard a whisper from anybody on that stuff since then.
I'll call Justin.
Can we have the courthouse remodel? We had put 20,000.
You mean this building?
Yes.
Parks.
We haven't expended any of that. Not sure if Mr. Poplick is working his magic on, in his, on his budget, I'm not sure.
Was that in his budget?
Wouldn't that bill pay for some of the recon cremation downstairs across from motor vehicles for the accessories?
Yeah.
Well, that's...
That's treacherous, and then accessory down below.
I, you would have, I, nothing's been posted to that account line.
Answers.
I don't have one.
Accessory, we haven't done anything with, but that other room, that was like $100.
Yeah, I mean, that's a bigger project that would be this current, next fiscal, that motor vehicle one that you're speaking of, will be.
One down across the hallway, here, in the little...
They're about done with that.
Where is that, at the budget limit?
I'm going to venture to guess that Tom has taken it out of his courthouse building budget. He is aware that these funds were available, but nothing has been posted to this account line. So... So when we get to the maintenance department, I guess we can make a note of that.
Okay. Juvenile Court, 9291.
Right.
Student Court, we've given it 6,000 for the last few odd, uh, with what's going on with the kids. Again, this is a good program that helps keep them out of jail, and out of the system initially, I think. I don't know if we want to increase it or just keep it at six. But they do use the funds, they do use, it's a heck of a program.
Have they requested this increase?
No, I, I'm not the liaison anymore. Turn to your left.
I do not have a written request.
What money? That's what I ask, have they requested an increase over the 6,000?
I'd give them at least the 6,000 personally, but like I said, it is a good program. They, they're doing some good work, so keeps it out, keeps the kids out of jail, out of YCC.
I don't have any problem keeping them, keeping that where it is, I just didn't know if they had requested anything additional.
So six?
Six.
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 Thank you. And then going down the rest, those are all reimbursement-based, so we don't ever put any budget money in there until we've expended, and then I just transfer funds, so there's no budget request in those remaining lines.
Do you have an update for us on MRG SkyWest? Just to tell us whether we, is this this eight?
How much have we expended thus far?
Yeah, is that 8,000?
Uh, as of today, that is current. We did get a check from Wyoming Aeronautics from the state last week, I think? And then the other partners, the EK and up.
Now, clerk, at the very top of the column, it says 2021, 2022, expended, but it has April 30 on it. Should that be changed?
Yes, I changed mine, I didn't change yours, yes. Thank you for that. Yeah, the state, we got a check from the state. But I have billed one, I think they're behind one invoice, behind, I mean, I billed, there's one more invoice that they haven't paid, if I'm remembering correctly.
If we only got the one invoice from SkyWest so far, for the 443.
There's two, that, for this current fiscal, we've paid two. We've paid $886,000. Any other questions on that?
I don't think so.
Now, where would you like to go?
Well, we still had some questions that we're working on, did you get anything on the fair? Peter?
Not yet.
You do? Not yet, okay. Uh, so, looks like maybe maintenance?
Well, I have. Do you want to go back to commissioners, um, on the, I, over the lunch hour, I forward it to the commissioners and to Tracy and Michelle, um, the thing on the National Rural Counties for Public Lands thing, and it's $23,700, $23,700 and change, um, contribution being requested of Natrona County, which is 1% of the tribal impact funds that were received in Natrona County. I would suggest that we make that contribution.
Have they exhausted all of that request?
This is what we're talking about. Yeah. So, it's...
So I was just going to take care of that, I suggest we take care of that.
Is there a line, do we need to, have a line add in for it then?
Yes.
Just an add to the mission pages.
Dues.
Yeah, dues, thank you. Does that work, man, clerk?
Are we...
Because it's a WCCA.
But we, but it's a...
It's actually, it's actually NACO.
But it's a...
Western Interstate Regional, is what it says.
Payable to?
That's who the invoice.
Oh, okay.
National Centers for Public Lands Counties.
And can you explain a little bit how it relates to the tribal monies again?
It is based off 1% of Natrona County's local assistance for tribal consistency funds allocation. And so the total for FY, combination of FY '23 and FY '24, is $23,734.78.
But, but I don't think that it's to be counted against those funds.
That was my question, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, it's...
It's just based on what we've...
It's kind of how they came up with it, based upon kind of an equity thing.
Perfect.
Which is based on public lands in the county, and so it's, these are not tribal funds.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So we need, is it the desire of the commission to add that number to the dues and convention expenses then?
I would support that.
Yes. $23,700.
$34.78.
So that figure will be 133,735.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good all you had for that, Peter. Okay, now we'll, I think we're done with that, so we'll go to maintenance next?
Sure.
What would you rather do, Tracy, of all the ones that are left, what would you rather do first?
Oh, this goes through each of the buildings, doesn't it?
It's, yeah, maintenance, maintenance is not bad.
Okay.
The first Excel spreadsheet that you will have is his salary lines. It ends in the numbers, the 22. And in that request is a new, a new position, and giving one employee an increase due to acquiring a certification.
Disaddress salary increase?
Yes. It's in the first paragraph, Commissioner Laird. And I do believe he has a couple positions down still.
Well, he, he doesn't address a raise again, does he?
No, no. But that isn't, was not part of this request when it was initially submitted.
I think it needs to be addressed though, Mr. Chairman.
And looking at this, I think that we should address the salaries, starting with Mr. Poplick. He said 85,000, and I think he should be around 105.
Didn't we, didn't, didn't we exclude this with the wage study? Wasn't his department one of the ones considered by Danielle?
As far as I understand, yes, but you might want to verify that with Danielle, I don't want to speak for her.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that, Peter.
I know some of your other directors had gotten increases and whatnot, but I, I'm not quite sure on this particular position.
I will text you.
Okay. That was...
Peter, what he mentioned to me is he thought he should be up with the other heads of the departments. And he, I think that one meeting he was at, he kind of pointed out everything he's done. He did it again in this sheet, kind of telling you why he, you know, what all he's done for the county.
We can move on while we're waiting on that answer.
Commissioner Laird, though, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I want to be fair and compensate people as best we can. But if it's not included in his budget request, and we have this pending question, I don't know that we can address it right here, even if our gut tells us to go a certain direction. He did, he asked for Garrett, or he asked for his right-hand man because of his general contractor licensing. But that's what we have here.
Yeah, I think the Wyoming way for him is to show you all the things he's done, and then mention him at a meeting like he did, and that we should probably pick up on what he's really saying. He said that, so I went down and asked him, and that's what he was getting at. And that was, he wanted to be at least at the $100,000 level, uh, like the other department heads, and I quite frankly think he's entitled to it. That's my personal opinion. I told him it was my personal opinion, I have one vote, and that's, so I'm bringing it up here at this meeting to be considered.
Mm-hmm, yep. One truck, one tractor, floor drains for the boiler room by the library. Diesel fuel for generators.
And the, Mr. Chairman, the additions that are referred to in his narrative are kind of dispersed throughout his buildings and whatnot, and I can point out where they are when we get to that particular area. they are when we get to that particular area.
The next one is the one truck, one tractor.
That's actually, Mr. Nick, uh, Commissioner Nicolason, that's in the equipment line request, that 39 account.
We weren't there yet?
Was not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We can certainly go there if that's where you're at.
I didn't have anything else on the, uh, maintenance salaries other than the pending question.
Correct.
Okay.
As far as I...
I have no answer, so.
Okay.
We're still pending.
So we're moving on. So if you wanna, I know it's a lot of paper flipping, so I was trying to avoid that, but this, um, the truck and the tractor is in the equipment line request under the Commissioners' 39 account.
I think we oughta approve that. As much, much stuff as he's had to, to move, snow and everything else, I think that's reasonable for what he's looking for.
Uh, Commissioner Marth, so on the, the trucks, um, I, I understand Mr. Poplick's preference is not to get a hand-me-down, you know, and there are hand-me-downs, and there are hand-me-downs. Uh, you know, the 40,000 mile hand-me-down, and there's 140,000 mile hand-me-down. And sometimes it's hard on, on a full-size vehicle, getting, getting stuff and the weight on the front end. What are your thoughts on whether, in some cases, if the hand-me-down is actually a good vehicle for snow removal?
If you could choose your hand-me-down, and you could be very specific, that would work. For, for personal use, I think that would work fine. Unfortunately, the hand-me-downs that we usually get from the county are hand-me-downs for a really good reason. They've been used and abused, and you end up spending more money doing maintenance on them, repairing them, keeping them running. So I understand what you're saying. For some applications, I think that's fine, but for what he's having to do and the amount of area he's covering for the county, I think we need to make sure that we have something that's, that's reliable. Cause if you're using something for a plow truck, 40,000 miles on a plow truck is, is a lot of, that's a lot of abuse, you know, but...
What's his truck fleet now?
That I don't know. I'm not real sure.
Well, your point's a good one. Like I said, there are hand-me-downs, and then there are hand-me-downs.
Yeah, and I thi- and I thi- I think most of our hand-me-downs that we get are, are not the ones that you would wanna, they'd be fine for driving around town, but I wouldn't take them out of town, most of them. So, and that's just, usually when we put them, take them out of service, there's a really good reason, or move them on to a different location. So I, plow trucks are hard. I mean, that's just hard on equipment. There's no way or, no way around that. So.
Do you remember what his priority was?
Truck.
I mean, that's what he said was tru- but I think, I think with what he's doing right now, um, I would really like to see us get, take care of both ends of it, if we possibly can, just because of the amount of areas he's got covered on this. So that's, that's my personal feeling, but I do, but Tom did say truck was his, his first priority.
Well, I'm okay with the truck. I'll, I'll start the conversation here, so. I'm okay with the truck. And I would put the same stipulations we did earlier, the 50, 55,000, not ballpark.
Well, he's gonna need a three-quarter.
Yeah, he's gonna have to have, this isn't a half-ton, this is a heavier truck.
I think 60.
It's gonna have to be a heavy-duty three-quarter ton or want to...
Sixty.
...job, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a base.
Yeah, it's gonna be a $60,000 truck.
Okay.
So if you're putting plow on it, you'll need a, what do you, ultimately around two, one and a half and down.
Truck that's with a plow.
That price does include a plow?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay, everybody's good with the truck, so let's move on to the tractor now.
Either the truck at 60 or 27.
Truck with plow.
I, the, uh, yeah, because by the time you add, I mean, the plows are 5,500, 6,000 bucks by themselves.
What the plow is?
Yeah.
He asked for 60, and is he taking the plow off the old truck and putting it on this one?
Or is buying a gently-used truck, you know, a one-year-old truck?
No, it says our current trucks are hand-me-downs, so I don't think he's doing that. I say 60 because that's what he asked for.
Okay.
Tractor?
They're just gonna keep going up in, in price. But that's all he's looking for is, is, he's not using, looking for a great big one. He's looking for something to move snow, and that's... So...
Did we get, did we get enough information? It says it's several years old in the current one. I don't know what the leaks are. I don't know what several years means. They need a, I think they need a good one. But then, do they have, they just have a one tractor?
No, so the library's got their, their, actually. That's not for us.
No, but, you know, Tom's got the toolkit, tool cat, bobcat thing.
Mm-hmm.
Plus the tractor. And I don't think they use any side-by-sides or...
No, no. Thing about the tractor is that, that allows you to split the pile up the snow a little higher and get it out of the way, whereas some of their other stuff, you can't do that with a plow. You can't do that with the, the bobcat. You know, it just, they're just not designed to stack it and get it out of the way.
Mr. Chairman, according to Mr. Poplick, he can get a three-quarter ton used, like he bought this year with a new plow installed for under 60,000. The tractor is 28 years old.
It's current.
That's older than the deal at the library.
Maybe it's five years older.
Yep. I think we oughta get both.
I don't look at both of it.
I don't look at it.
I know, I know with my, I know with my tractor, it's 24 years old. I'm starting to have all kinds of...
Okay, you guys good with the truck for 60 and 40 for a tractor?
Yeah.
Okay. The list then goes into floor drains, diesel fuel.
Um, the floor drains, Mr. Chairman, will be in the detention center request. The, the last three bullet points, or the last, the, the diesel fuel, the lighting, and the equipment repair will be in the courthouse, um, budget. So as we get to those buildings, we can, um, address those if you don't mind.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, could we start with the Ag building if you have no further questions with the salaries and the equipment?
The only question that I have is, maintenance needs a shop, and I get that, that's, that's on the want list, but, um, do we own that, just cause I haven't been out there and looked at it, the old fire station out there? Do we own that building?
It's county, yeah, that's county. That's, that belongs to, that, Rowan Bridge. We currently have a lot of the sheriff's equipment in there, and, uh, the building needs a lot of work. Um, the roof needs to be replaced, the doors need to be sealed. But, yeah, we do own that, we do own that building.
I'm just wondering, driving by, it looks abandoned, and wondered if that was something that, if he needs a shop, that, if there's space for him, but...
Well, that's, if, if you go by and look inside, there's a lot of, well, you gotta figure out what's in it, with the sheriff's equipment.
I don't know what's in it, so.
Yeah.
I'll take a field trip. All right. So which one were we going to?
The Ag.
The Ag.
Ends in 23.
Well, I, I just found it.
No. So I guess I'd have a question on the building repair and maintenance line on him. It's, uh, looks like it was 29,254 historically, and again, not quite, not even $8,000 each, each time has been expended, and then this year we're at a 29,254, they're at 3,500 expended.
Let me go to that building real quickly.
Okay. And I ask, is he requesting 2,000 less, but this is another one where they're not even coming close to expending?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, he's expended 5,159.
Wasn't there a big flooring project?
That's in cap- the capital improvements line. That's 17. 17.
So even where we're at right now on this line, I, I mean, what they're asking, we're still 20,000 over, or 20,000 more being requested in the last, this one, previous two budget cycles. That, that never gets used. We could dial it back, I think. Even if you only dial it back 10,000, I mean, 10 or 15, that'd still leave 10 in there. Or actually, almost 15 in there.
It looks like the utilities in the contract cost are the two that are, that they're projecting as being higher. Utilities are gonna go up, that's one thing that's...
They're like 10,000 higher on utilities. I would suggest on the building maintenance, we take that down to, even take it down to 15. I mean, that's backing it out by almost 15, 14,000 something.
On what part?
Building repair and maintenance.
812.
812.
Yeah. I mean, if there's a big...
Mama Tracy.
Yeah.
Yep. Out of order to have the money available, cause it's, that building's getting older.
So you, you're agreeing to, to reduce it to 15?
15 will work.
We'll reduce that line out and down to 15.
Something happens, we'll have to come back and take care of it, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Lot of numbers.
Not only looks, is.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
Sir?
Mr. Chairman, on, do you think that 30%, kind of across the board, increased free utilities is justified in terms of what you've been seeing?
Well, to point, the Ag is over, um, by 620 dollars. I mean, that's not 30%. No.
Cause that's, that's gonna be a big ticket this year.
That is gonna be, that is gonna be a big ticket. Um...
Electric utilities have gone up ridiculously, so.
I, I don't, I don't know. I think for sure there, you know, we should leave a buffer in there, however, I'm not sure if 30%.
You do things the right way. Well, okay.
And, and if you look at the narrative, Commissioner Nicolason, it says increase in contract labor and utilities, a 30% adjustment. So I don't think that's just utilities alone for what that's worth.
And it's not just the maintenance budget, it's some of the other departments too. And I didn't know what the actuals, if that's consistent, if the actual's coming in. But apparently it's far off, so.
And, and we can certainly look at that per, you know, per department as we go through here.
Mr. Nicolason, you know the biggest problem? Old buildings that aren't properly insulated. And I don't know how we're gonna deal with that.
No. Yeah, and then the foot heater, space heater, things. Anyway, if, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
And also, I guess, um, Mr. Chairman, as far as the building's repair and maintenance, Mr. Poplick and his, uh, staff are doing a lot of the repairs in-house, which is helping bring those costs down, from what I'm understanding. But he says to be careful because things can go south quickly.
Yep. Are we good with Ag?
Okay, so the only change, Mr. Chairman, we had was to change that rebuilding repair maintenance line to 15.
To 15, correct.
Thank you.
Detention Center, JDC.
Is that the next, is that the next one?
You're out of order, mister. We're going to the G, or, yeah, JDC Detention Center.
So just, Mr. Chairman, this is for both the jail and the JDC.
Mm-hmm.
And the capital improvements?
Mm-hmm.
That's for four units up on top of the jail.
I don't know if we have much of a choice on these.
You don't.
And the drain?
We really don't. That's, that's stuff that's been neglected for a long time. Roof tops, we talked about that, because if we take them stage at a time and do a little at a time, then that saves us money. The, the piping and the sales, that has to be done because it's, it wasn't, there's... issues that are associated with that. The security locks, we've gotta do that, for obvious reasons. And the floor drain in the boiler room upstairs, because those are sitting where they don't drain right now at all, and that's gotta be fixed, so.
Okay.
Those are all items that we looked at the last time we went up there and took a tour with everybody, and they were identified, they have been identified, so.
Anybody got any questions on that one?
I don't think, I don't think the estimate's gonna, is enough. I think it's gonna take more money than that. That's my own...
I don't think, I think he's, I think he's on the money. I think he, he knows what the costs are gonna be, so.
Okay, we'll move on to the courthouse then.
So, Mr. Chairman, at the courthouse, account line eighty-four thirty-one, operating supplies, is where we put, for the diesel fuel, the continued LED upgrades, and the equipment repair.
Okay.
Something strikes me, didn't Mr. Poplick comment on this diesel fuel issue? Forget where it was located, where we should go to natural gas, which would be a lot cheaper than diesel fuel?
Yes. Yes.
So is that part of what we're talking about here? Because I don't think that was really ever seriously discussed. It's kinda like switching to LED lighting would be cheaper, but then, you got, you got a lot of old time lighting in here.
Well, what Tom was talking about doing is anything we do in the future, go on natural gas on those completely, and then slowly changing them over as we need to. Because we could even retrofit the diesel generators to natural gas. If you do it one at a time, you can actually set that up and do that, too. That's, they've been doing that out in the oilfield for years.
So on the courthouse itself, I do have a question. I had a note here, next to the chiller, where Tom said he could keep that going. Is that, is it on its last leg, or is it something that needs to be replaced right now? Because that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand, almost quarter million.
It was working good this morning.
He said that the, the problem with the chillers is that they're all R-22 right now. You can't, you're gonna have to change that, because you can't get that coolant anymore, so you're gonna have to upgrade at some point to get that taken care of.
Sure, but my question is, in making that note there, he said he can keep it going, so that, my question is, is it...
Until, until the R-22, until his supply runs out.
So, for that, we add a bunch to, you know, one hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we need to, to give that chiller to have a form out for his thing.
Another sixty?
Another sixty. So we run it to one cent.
So does he need two? Does he need two? Chiller?
I think there's only one chiller on...
Well, but he's getting a chiller in one, in...
I think I would have the cost one.
He's, he has a chiller requ, he has a chiller approved in fiscal twenty-four for the courthouse. And he's asking for, so he's asking for, he needs two? Okay, so that's, I guess what I'm asking, is that a duplication?
Yeah, give me, I'll ask him and see.
I'll ask.
Hmm? What'd you say? Oh, right, right. Yep.
Sheriff, how you doing this afternoon? Good.
I'll try to please him and come up here and say, hey, this.
Come up, come up and explain your budget in three minutes.
So, so, yeah, I mean, I didn't think that the move for the assessor was gonna be that big of a deal.
What does it say?
That's a pretty big deal.
I don't think it's necessary either. I don't think it's necessary either. Some of this remodeling around here, it doesn't hurt anybody to walk an extra twenty feet to an office, in my opinion.
Put that down to sixty-five and do what you can with that, and then you have the money to replace the chiller.
Mr. Chairman?
That's okay.
It's one chiller. It was approved after, in one cent, but after he turned in his budget, or, so, it was actually approved in October, notification wasn't given till after he turned his budget in, so he needs one chiller.
Alright, so what if we took the renovation for the assessors down to sixty-five? And that would save us sixty thousand out of that, of which we can add to the one sixty-five, giving us two twenty-five for the chiller.
You already, but you have a hundred and sixty-five in one cent?
Correct.
For the chiller, so, okay.
Correct, and if we take sixty out of the one twenty-five for the renovation to the assessors and try and get that done with sixty-five thousand, then you've got the money you need for the chiller, for this building. If I did my math right.
Yes.
So take sixty?
So drop the renovations.
Just to sixty-five.
One twenty-five down to sixty-five.
Okay.
You've got the one cent approved already for the chiller, take and add sixty onto that, that should be going with the thing now at this point.
The sixty, we're moving out of the renovations, for the assessors, we're adding to the one sixty-five, one cent?
Yes.
To give us two twenty-five.
Okay, so when we get to one cent, we'll need to note that, so I...
No, 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 no. We're...
The one cent stays the same.
One sixty-five plus sixty.
We're not changing the one cent at all.
I understand that, but he has two different account lines here. So we have a, has a hundred and sixty-five in one cent, and he has two hundred and twenty-five in his building maintenance. So, number one, where do you want the whole cost of the chiller to come from? And number two, what do you want, number one, where do you want the whole cost of the chiller to come from?
Can't you split it? You said a hundred and sixty-five, maybe within the one cent, and then the chiller amount on the side to give the remaining.
I, I can, yes. Is that what you two would like me to do?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the only concern I have, and I feel a little awkward since I kinda brought it up, it's one thing to squawk a little bit about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, another thing to cut in half. I don't know if I know quite enough to, um, cut that much. So I, what about, what about taking fifty off of it?
I'm gonna go with no.
We've already made a decision.
Will anybody give me fifty, 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 forty-five, forty-five?
So that's being reduced to sixty-five?
My old grandmother said all it needs is a new can of paint. And you can put the desks in there, and you can put up the sign, and you got the offices.
Anything else on the courthouse? I don't wanna hold you up, did you? Maybe we can jump over to Danielle real quick with an answer to...
Sure, so, um, your maintenance director's salary was, when you started, it was seventy-five thousand. The commissioners, on July first of twenty-two, um, that position received a ten thousand dollar per year increase, so that brought him up to eighty-five thousand dollars per year. The salary range, the minimum was seventy-four thousand, the midpoint is ninety-two thousand seven hundred. So with his years of service, and then giving him two years of experience, is basically where he would be at for, he would get about eighty-three thousand if we did that with the salary that he's at, eighty-five. So he's within market.
Does that include the fact that he has a contractor's license and all that kinda thing?
Yeah, all of the other job descriptions that I went through from the market study, from other municipalities and counties.
Danielle, what about his previous experience with the college?
So, we didn't consider that into the, into the equation, none of us thought it. I've got twenty-two years, we didn't, we didn't consider that.
What did he do at the college?
Same thing. He was a maintenance director at the...
Why wouldn't that count?
The very top is behind eleven.
Well, in my humble opinion, I think he deserves a hundred thousand a year at least.
Eighty-five was in seven one twenty-two. So the only thing that'll throw it off is with your other directors and your other department heads. Um, we did not go over midpoint unless they have over twenty years of service. Nobody has over twenty years of service. So Mike Hager and Eileen were both at that midpoint.
How many of them make at least a hundred?
Myself is right at one hundred. Eileen is over one hundred, Hager's over one hundred. Your parks director is at ninety thousand. Your parks director was offered eighty and negotiated up to ninety, and that was his starting, and he's within market.
Yep. It's fine. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to come back? I can put these, do you want me to rub that eight please? Or do you want me to put it on the panel or something?
We'll use, we'll go probably in exact word. Yeah, yeah.
Just keep watching YouTube, so if we need you.
Yeah, we may need you.
Did they fill the position building, Inspector?
Okay, so we'll go back to the building, this is in the Shreve County Townsend Justice Center.
One step at a time.
Yeah.
One floor at a time, maybe I should say that.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything on that one?
On what? I didn't hear you.
Townsend Justice.
Yes, I do. I have, I've discussed it, the issue with the security in the parking lot. There is no security in the parking lot, except deputies who patrol it and, but the judges feel like they need to have a security there, and Mr. Poplick obtained a bid from Michael's Fence for a, to enclose that whole parking lot with a seventy-two inch high fence, industrial strength. The bid is two hundred, four thousand, seven hundred, eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents, which is about two hundred thousand more than I thought it would be, or less, excuse me, less. But, there's just a serious issue over there, in terms of security, and in terms of the way these lady judges are feeling, and, and as we all know, the change in Casper with respect to people that, that are going around the city, uh, which I have gone down when people downtown have complained, and see what was going on, and it is, it's, it's just not the Casper I once knew. Uh, and so, um, this is one avenue of something that could be done, because the way the parking lot's set up, and I'm sure you've all driven by there, um, there's no security where they park. They're on an alleyway that's completely open, and people are walking up and down the alleyway, and there's no real, um, control over any of that area. In fact, the deputies had to put up a big concrete barrier out in front, because people were driving over the curb and going over the sidewalks to get into the parking lot. In addition, there are incidents that occur at the building, which the sheriff's department is fully aware of, and, um, which are causing, um, issues of safety. It's, if, if one of them came over here, Mr. Chairman, they would tell you a similar story about what you heard on the library, except about three or four times as bad. Because when you're a judge and you're making these decisions in these kinds of cases, no matter how you rule, somebody is really, really mad. And so, um, I'm presenting this to the commission, because I think it's, it's time, it would be, it's just time to get this stuff done. I have also talked to the city, they think they'll have this new licensing thing for the planters available in July sometime, which is a couple weeks away, and I hope that that means we can put the planters up, so we won't have issues of cars coming around that corner up there off of First Street, sliding sideways into the building. In addition, the deputies tell me there's been tire marks going straight down the sidewalk, down by, starting at the corner, um, where the, that fraternal building is, and coming down the sidewalk. I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know what's going on, and then I was told, you didn't know this, that the people that put the graffiti on the front door to the police station, of all things, finally did get caught. And so I was happy when I heard that. And so I was happy when I heard that. But security's, security for our, for all of our people is, has to be a, has to be right up at the top of the list of what we do here. And so you have, I guess you have jurors who don't like coming down there because, you know, they're in there and then they get hassled by different people when they come out the door, all of that kind of thing goes on. And so, I'm presenting what I have. And I'm suggesting that we give it our complete attention.
Nate Dallas, did you have a partial fencing?
I did, I asked, I asked to find out what it would cost to just build a fence down that alley, but that really doesn't do much, it just blocks anybody from driving a car up next to it. Because the judges park right on the alley, so if you drove a car there now, a van, somebody could jump out, grab somebody and throw them in the van and drive off. If you had the, if you had a fence just along that wall, the bid on that was 40,589. But this, this one for the 204,000 would, includes that, by the way. It doesn't add that on, it includes that side. But that keeps anybody from getting their car in there, or coming in there actually, and grabbing somebody or stabbing somebody, or whatever anybody decides that they do in this day and age. But when you're in a, when you're in a whole, a high-profile job where you're making decisions in criminal cases and you have family members out there that are threatening you, I've gone through that personally when I was a special prosecutor in a murder case. Myself and the judge were threatened and shotgun casings were sent to us with death threats inside them and things were written on the wall down here in the courthouse. We all carried guns and I moved out of my house and so did the judge, and we moved down to the Ramada and lived with four deputies since I sent my family to Mexico. It was scary, I was personally, that was the one time I was personally scared. So I've, I've lived that, but I think they're living it every day. So, and they don't, you know, they, they're not wearing body armor and they're not educated in how to use firearms. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Peter.
I've said enough, thank you.
I didn't need to interrupt.
That's all right, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate what Commissioner Laird is relaying to us, I think it's an important issue. I, I'm not comfortable saying here's 100,000 or 200,000 today based on the information we have. It might be one or, you know, a partial fence or a full fence with a gate opener might be the best solution, but I'd really like to see your group that you're the liaison to come back with a proposal. Maybe, maybe, you know, the sheriff can have input on, I think, both the assessment of the issues. Because I don't think it's just the judges, I know they make enemies, but there's also staff over there and...
And they all park in that parking lot, Mr. Nicolason?
Well, not all of them, some of them park right there.
You're right, there is limited parking over there, but a lot of the clerks park over there. And I did leave out the fact that this 204,000 one is the one the deputies came up with.
Okay.
And...
So I think it's a, I think in the near future, trying to figure out a solution for it makes sense. And it might be something that costs more and looks a little different. You know, I think that some people have talked about a parking garage. You know, I don't know what the solution is, but I'd like to do it right.
Yeah, there, there is one thought that Mr. Poplick had, which I wanna meet with him, kinda get my mind wrapped around it, and that is some sort of garage to be added on to the end of the building, which I would prefer that personally if it was me. Because they come down the elevator and they step into the garage, get their car, the garage door opens up and they leave. But still, when you do that, you haven't fenced out the public. So, but that, that kind of a structure is gonna be a lot more than 200,000. But that's, I don't think it's, you know, just doing the planters, Mr. Nicolason, has gone on for two years.
Over two years.
Over two years. There's a car that hit the building and broke the windows out in Phil Keister's office, actually before she was there. There's, they've seen marks over there on the building from cars. And, you know, an accidental swerve as somebody was getting into a car and somebody gets hit in that parking lot, was it an accident or wasn't it, I don't know, but I sure would like to take that equation out of that issue. And it's like all of our buildings, Mr. Nicolason, they were all designed years ago and they're, they're, it's like we're all driving Model Ts in some ways.
Well, we can do some follow-up on the options over there and then readdress...
Yeah, I think so.
Everything through the commission, but not right now.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, would we need to add the 32,000 for the planters that have been waylaid for so long, since they're not in this new budget request?
Well, did we have anything budgeted to go in there in the first place, the ballards?
Yes.
And is that money, that's not been expended, correct?
No, but we don't carry, we don't do it, carry forward.
Oh, okay.
We do it, yeah, we, zero balance budget, so we would have to reallocate it. Okay, so I'll be, Mr. Chairman, I'll be adding it to the capital improvement line.
Bein' nice to the city, they're not all that bad.
Mr. Chairman, just, Mr. Chairman, just so I know, what is it you would like me to do further with respect to this issue in the parking lot?
Well, let's do a study over there as far as what we need to do. You know, what's the best approach to all that?
Well, I thought...
And go get more than just one bit, don't...
Well, yeah, I understand that part, yeah. I, I thought that the deputies probably were pretty adept at assessing this issue.
I know, Mr. Laird, you interrupted me a couple times, let me just say to try and bring this to closure. I'd like a representative of the district court, a representative of the circuit court, including a judge, and, you know, the sheriff's office definitely. But I think it's a small group of four or five people that put some sort of proposal together that we can take a look at in a work session.
What I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, Mr. Nicolason, and your schedule is to make an appointment with this judge and you and I'll go visit with her. Because I think you need to hear it. But she's got a stack of documents that she doesn't want to share with anybody but me and the sheriff's department. And it has to do with, I think, safety. So I would like you to hear it yourself.
So let's make her part of the group and get together, just like Commissioner Nicolason just said.
I'm not sure you can get judges to do that, I just don't know.
You don't know until we ask.
Well, yes, and I have asked.
Okay, okay, let's, let's bring it back to a work session, because we need to get through this budget first. We'll bring it, it's not falling on deaf ears, just...
Yeah.
Let's bring it back to a work session.
I got you.
In fact, I'll have Michelle put it on one in July. Toronto County Health Department. This is just another one to know, we don't wanna probably take out of it, but again, almost $20,000 each year being requested, but 5,000, 4,000, and 4,000 being expended. Is it...
Ah, repairs and maintenance.
Ah, repairs and maintenance, yeah.
I believe the reason being on this one in the past, though, is that we do want to have that money there in case repairs to the Chiller's generator, whatever is there, because of the amount of vaccination vaccines and other deals, we need to have that funds available.
Good. Okay. Anything else on that one?
Sounds good to me.
All right, to the library.
Fire alarm, Mr. Chairman. The fire alarm system is one of these projects that's gonna expire during the next fiscal year. Their cost is about 125,000 dollars. I can't remember, I know the contract has been awarded, the project's been awarded to a local electrical company, but the contract is upstate and illegal. The work that we've done this calendar year, so where is that coming from? And do we need to account for it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, I have no idea about the fire alarm system, so I would say it is not in these numbers, according to his report. So we could put it into this, into his capital improvements, if you would so choose.
Yeah, this was an emergency situation that the city said was going on since 2013, with that facility assessment need, and then it really just fell apart or stopped working completely in February.
Yeah, I do kinda remember that conversation. So is the amount, is the 125,000 a solid number? Was that given to you by Mr. Poplick or library staff, do you know?
Uh, that's the bid that library board selected, but let me make sure the exact amount here momentarily.
Is, so that bid's already been selected, then?
Correct.
Oh, my question, on who's the best on the...
Do not, okay, thank you. Did the board consult Mr. Poplick on this, or did they just go out independently and get a bid?
No, he was part of the, I may be confusing, I recollect, you may be wrong on Health Department versus Library. I know he was involved and was with us during the term.
Thank you.
We can get something else while we...
Good. That's the only thing we're waiting on on that one, unless somebody else says something else in the library.
I don't have anything. Can we take the sheriff's department, since he's down here, don't make him sit around all afternoon?
Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back and finish the last two buildings, three buildings. And then we'll jump on the sheriff.
We may wanna cross-examine you.
You better take the break while you get it.
Yeah. It doesn't always coincide that way.
Steve, it looks like tomorrow we just go to 5 o'clock totally?
Mm-mm. Because you got a business meeting afterwards.
Is there gonna be something about abortion planned here in Ramada? I'm getting notes about that.
Peter?
Yeah. And maybe the cities.
I don't know. Could be.
Public and public meetings and public comments, that's the only way it could be, it's not on our agenda.
It's 30th, Steve?
30th. And it was getting open this afternoon, but I hadn't had a chance to tell anybody until yet, so...
Or was the...
Danielle's will mock until that was done.
Media?
Part of me thinks that's fair, and part of me thinks...
Well, I think it's gonna be a county meeting, Steve.
Huh?
Mm-hmm.
All they can do is bring it to us and... And couple of comments, because it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
Don't get out.
Okay. Yeah.
Cup of coffee together?
Yeah. Sounds good. Yeah, just pick and dig. Yeah, vehicle with a trailer.
Did you miss it? You don't have your big phone on?
Oh, yes.
Well, I'll do it now if you want to. I know, that's what I want.
Well, you have three mobile phones.
Yeah.
If they'll do that, so we can.
Not a lot, just, the rain's down.
Oh, geez. No sun.
Yeah, we got, we got some new, kind of, the chairman, the president. Two little water, right? There was something, we obviously look actually going slow.
Good. Any problems at the house or anything?
No, we have two cell phones, one exterior, one in the crawl space. I did go out and put, we had extensions for our house. Go home, those aren't.
Yeah.
Which was good because one cell phone has been a little bit of a delay after that. And I'm in Brooklyn, you know, part of Brooklyn every place. And so, you've done that edge, kind of, the wall, there's a section around that house. So, I'm not sure what happened.
All right, so we'll jump back in and do the Hall of Justice. Guess I'll just bring it up again, capital improvements on this, same thing, 20,000 every year. And we had 92 expended so far this year, 70 back in 2020. None in 2021.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, actually, this current fiscal, we have expended $8,042. A lot of these expenses have been ran through the Joint Powers Board, which helps with decreasing this line item.
We've been, we've been trying to get that taken care of.
Where's that reserve at now?
Oh, that, I don't have those, I can, what the balance is in those accounts, I can try to get it for you very quickly.
We, in the past, we tried to keep a balance up.
We're fully, we're fully funded, if that's what you're talking about for the, are you talking about for the Joint Powers Board? Yeah, we're fully funded right now.
Hundred grand, isn't it?
No.
I'm going to say no, because we've had a lot of money going out. Let me see if I can get that for you.
Okay. Anything else in Hall of Justice then? Okay. Let's go to the morgue. Just a question on that, though. He was talking about that storage for unclaimed. Is that going to fall under, is that something that will fall under capital? Or does that need to be added in there?
More like tools and equipment.
Right.
I don't think that's going to be a real big expenditure from what he was talking. Wasn't he talking about using, utilizing something he already had?
Using the one that's out there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good with that one then? I was going to say.
Capital improvements are also going in the road bridge section, or in the road bridge section. Mike, what is going to do, so, whichever one's a little flawed.
It'll, you'll need to refer to the road and bridge, it's not any.
It was just part of the narrative, right?
Yeah, but he's missing a couple. All right, was there anything else in, in? Maintenance?
What do we want to do about salary?
We're going to talk about that tomorrow in executive session.
I wasn't sure, I got an email from Danielle, which called out, I didn't see who she addressed, the issue, the manager sent it.
Okay, anything else in maintenance? Okay. We're going to move on to the sheriff.
So, 8511. If you were historical, not much there.
In which department, Sheriff?
Administration.
Thank you.
8511. Increase up to 12,000 this year. We're going to pass 3,500. And expect, spend the truth. Last week, this year, last year, 705.
On 8416?
For 8511? I'm going to say no. You probably need to ask the sheriff about the increase for the criminal interdiction support line.
Mr. Chairman, so, previously that was the bomb dog. And that was mostly funded through my mouse homeland security plan for the explosive detection canine. We went away from that program and we have now brought on a drug detection and patrol canine. So, that's, that's where you see the difference. That line item will be used for criminal interdiction out on the highways, the drug inhibition. And that supports that, that new dog.
The only one I had was on 8416. Your ammunition. Just checking to see if you just, if you just need to stock up this year or, because that's a pretty big change. I know in the past you've used quite a bit, but. Going from, you went up to 30,000 last year, you only, I don't know what their current.
The current, Mr. Chairman, is 18,629.
Okay. And then last year you used 4387 before that, so, and I know it was hard to come by, so that's probably why you didn't use much ammunition.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner North, that's, that's correct, we, we're kind of in a position where we have to buy when it's available. So, that's really what we're looking at with that line item.
Okay.
It's been so hard to.
You're preaching to the choir on that, I, I understand that completely, that's where you want to understand why you're, it was very, very difficult to get, get a couple of years going now. It's all finally starting to show back up again, slowly but surely.
Mr. Chairman, in the admin budget, I just want you to note that not, not included in the request of the 4.4 million dollar number is an additional deputy, and the sheriff can speak to that, and then also a wage increase for a particular staff member. So, again, those two things are not included in the request that is shown on your worksheet.
Okay, so you got, it shows 44633 as additional civilian stepping grade scheduled, but that's not in that number?
The 44633 is.
Okay.
In addition to that, there is an additional request for a deputy. That totals $107,017, including burden, and then a increase for a staff member, which is 4,0982. So, about 112,000, that's not included in that 4.406 number. Is that correct, Sheriff? Thank you.
Where would that deputy be? Have you, are you just down somebody or is this an additional position?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner North, so, I mentioned before, that's actually a position that would be a task force officer at the DCI Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. So, specifically, they're, they're assigned, they're 100% of the time. We have it entered into a MOU with DCI to recoup $42,000 of that salary. Very similar to what we already do with a drug task force officer, but it would be specific to ICAC cases. And we've identified that community has been a huge problem and like to focus some more effort. And this is actually a very cost-effective way to do that, by having $42,000 of that salary cost come back to the county. I requested the full amount, so there's no supplanting issues with having a partial funding there. But that, that money does come back to the general fund, just like our agreement with the drug task force.
Okay.
Thank you, plan it doesn't go to you, it comes directly to us, doesn't it?
That 42,000?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said previously, yeah. Thank you.
Jim?
Since you're here, I can ask, would, it's a new line item, community outreach. What's your plans with that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Millen, so that, that effect, that line item supports our public information officer, which actually has grown into public outreach. So, we are hosting different events, different products that we're putting out in the community. One of those is conjunction with emergency management, which again is a position in the sheriff's office. And we host a public awareness, like a touch truck event, where we have prizes for kids. They go around and talk to all the first responders in our community and, and get to see their different engines, fire engines, and their different pieces of equipment, the dive team, the sheriff's office equipment. And, and then they earn prizes for getting all the signatures on their cards and just little things like water bottles with public safety messages on there and things that are child-friendly. So, so really, it's, it's that kind of thing. And publications and any other kind of public education pieces we put out there. Since we're jumping ahead, detention centers.
So we're jumping ahead, detention centers. Defense, detention center. It'd be eighty-two oh five forty inmate. Would you. Question, question request of four hundred and eighty. What was the spending so far this year?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Milne, four hundred nineteen thousand two sixty-one.
So that's pretty much on track. It's limited lines more so than potentially that's for.
Correct.
And then also going to eighty-two fourteen second. Worksheet prescriptions. Second, two thirty-five right now for a request. Historically, it doesn't look like it came close over the next couple of years. Where are we at with that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Milne, we're currently at one hundred and eighty-two thousand six fifty-five. Now remember, again, there may be some vouchers that have not been posted yet.
So it looks like the action.
I would agree, yes.
Right along with that, how about eighty-two thirteen? Where are we at on that currently?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner North, seventy-eight thousand two ninety-three thirty-six has been expended.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I'll go back and ask the same question as before on a couple of these line items. Back at the juvenile detention center for eighty-two oh nine and eighty-two eleven. One's clinical lab and one's dentist. Those both have, it's a thousand dollars. But a thousand dollars is asked every year and every year, none of it's expended.
Mr. Chairman, as of today, neither one of those lines, you're correct, nothing has been expended out of either one of those lines.
Tracy, my recollection, the last time sheriff was here, they were asking for about four hundred thousand more than they actually needed because they had the building in their condition. How much, can you calculate how much money is still in this budget as of today?
I can't accurately at this moment because I do not have payroll figures in my June expenses at this time. Quite honestly, the sheriff's staff would be able to probably give you a pretty accurate number to what's not going to be expended this fiscal.
Do you know how much money you're likely to turn back this year?
Somewhere around eight to nine hundred thousand.
Eight to nine hundred thousand?
I expect, yes, sir. And most of that comes from physicians that are open. That we have through the year.
How many physicians are open?
Currently, we have three nurses, three deputies, and two kitchen supervisors.
Is it the general reason why they're not?
Nursing staff is very hard to find anywhere. Right now, we're competing with traveling nurse wages. And the ability of nurses to dictate what schedules they want to work. So that's kind of an industry norm for nursing right now. Dynamic really changed during COVID. So although our wages are competitive for detention centers or, you know, most institutions, we just compete with those traveling nurse wages. And then our kitchen supervisors, that's just always a very hard position to fill, to get somebody to run a kitchen and a detention center. So we do have two good candidates that we're looking at now. We just have to work through the hiring process to bring them on board.
For the nursing or the kitchen?
Excuse me?
Two positions for the nursing or the kitchen?
Two positions for the kitchen supervisor, three positions for nurses, and three deputy sheriffs.
Turn his on. Anybody got anything on this? No?
I'm good with this budget myself.
Good.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, am I to add those two figures in for the extra staff and the wage increase? Or is that to be discussed later?
Now, is this one position correct?
Correct.
You have one, you're writing down.
We have three open positions right now. Both of them within the hiring process.
For all three?
I believe so. Congratulations.
So, yes, I believe to both of those questions, correct? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Brings us down to road and bridge parks. We need to go back to equipment, I have noted here. To go through that again, and then one cent. Employee raise isn't fair.
And then, Mr. Chairman, you all received the revenue, the updated revenue from Mr. Martinez, correct?
Could answer on gravel. For a line, eight three four, or the district transportation firm. Usually that's not really adjusted by commissioners. With the wash is really concerning with needing as much gravel as what he thinks he's going to have. Plus, we still owe for gravel that's sitting near the mine right now over at Big Horns, Mountain Road. Moses Crunch there, but we haven't hauled it, so we owe money. This seems to be halted. So there'll be that. Again, it's not general fund money, so, you know, yeah, whatever, as far as adjustment, but if he needs it, he'll have to get it. But it isn't part of the general fund.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hagler is correct. That's typically not, these line items in the road fund are not typically anything that the commissioners usually adjust or reduce. It's based on projects that Mike has in the works and based on the road fund money.
I guess while we're at it, I'll follow, animal control itself. Though Evansville and Mills, they are not, they are contract right now. The contracts were like spread out, so they're trying to get everybody back on, back on board. They would rather do it by population rather than percentage of calls out into the county itself. But right now, they don't really have a way of tracking things. The, until those contracts are done with those two municipalities. Those in particular are kind of skewing the numbers a little bit because some of the, like Mills, for instance, is they are impounding and holding animals in their building, so they never make it to Metro. So, which in turn.
So they're looking at population base?
Population based by each of the cities or towns and potentially just charge accordingly off of that, off population. So I hope, hope that answers your question on that. And then everybody's got a copy of that contract that, well. Actually, it stopped at Peter.
This is between Laramie, Nixona County for the GAL program.
That's not the one.
Yeah, there was no issue on that one.
That's not the one, this is the one.
Okay, this one is the misdemeanor inmate placement contract between the education centers in Boca Raton, Florida that expires on June thirtieth. And I don't know if there's a contract upstairs in legal waiting to be finalized, but we're getting kind of close to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The, it's a per day, per misdemeanor. There's kind of a scaled structure depending on how long they're, they're there. There is no forty thousand dollar, twenty thousand dollar number. I don't think it'd be a bad idea to put a not to exceed number in the next contract, but we're just basically, I guess county attorney's office in the past had a forty thousand dollar number based on maybe prior years or something. But we clearly haven't gotten close to that this year.
I guess I asked the question, and it being the sheriff's here, do you know anything about, it's with CAC, the reentry center itself? Community education centers?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that that is just provides the option to the courts to sentence somebody out there. I don't have much, much to do with that contract. I don't even know if it's being used or if we've ever, if the county's ever paid anything on it. We have. As far as I know, it's just an option, but.
Little leaf lights on. So on that one, are we good to? I think this can be dialed back to twenty. We haven't even come close to spending that on it.
Ten, ten.
Ten?
Is that consistent with the last number of years?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, I'm going to say yes, that would be more than plenty based on history.
So we go back to ten and then we'll check with legal and see if this is even getting extended. It may.
Where was that?
Go away, Boca Raton. But it's CAC.
General accounts are thirty-three. And it's account line ninety-one thirty-seven. And then, Mr. Chairman, did you say you did have more information on the GAL?
No, actually, Dave is going to look into that. We, I just grabbed the wrong.
Oh, okay.
Contract and Peter was expounding on.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. The library got back to me on the fire line system. The bid that was awarded was one hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. One two nine two three five.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to add that to the capital improvements line for the library?
Yeah, I mean, it's been, yeah, would you?
That's the whole thing. That was the whole fix. It's not being worked out.
It's the full arm, if not triple, but it's what we see.
So, Mr. Chairman, on the library, capital improvement line, nine thousand zero zero five thirty. That new number will be one thirty-seven six thirty-five.
I'm just wondering how much time each of these is going to take. We have road and bridge parks, one cent, and whatever we need to go back to for equipment. Dr.
Do you want to tackle road and bridge?
Sure. So did you see back in? So I just see back in 2021, 2022, under machinery, equipment rental, it was at 25,000, and then it got reduced down to 10,000. But, uh, and he's asking 10 again this year. However, this last year, obviously, we blew that out of the water. And, uh, not saying, knock on wood, that we're going to have another winter like we did, but if, uh, if we do, I personally think that should maybe be bumped back up at least to 20, if not 25,000.
It's at 25.
I agree.
At least that.
So increase that line to a total of 25?
Yeah, a total of 25, mm-hmm. I think it was seven, one, two, one.
Thank you.
Tracy, where are we at on, uh, 8422 right now?
We've expended 217,00231, so we have over expended by 20,00231.
I have a feeling that that's going to need to be bumped up also, because I don't think this is... I don't think that's going to be something that's going to go down.
He increased it a small amount. He increased it by $3,000.
Yeah, but if we're already at 217, we're already...
But that's probably, you know, due to the weather. But hard to say.
It's hard, yeah.
Look, it's raining every night, all night, so...
I know, I know, I know.
Whatever the, uh, pleasure of the commission.
I believe the words, God, if he needs warning, he can come and chat with me. I believe the words, uh, for him.
I agree.
God, are you kidding? I don't think so.
I, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, just so we can... With parks and everything else going up and supplies, it's just going to get worse.
So if you, Mr. Chairman, if you look at, um, page two of his admin request, if, if you're ready to move on to the capital funding request, or we can circle back.
You said page two?
Yes, page two of his, um, narrative. Do you want to go through that now, or do you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So on the, um, the gravel pit, the two gravel pits, there was, um, this current fiscal, there was money approved for those two gravel pits. He's only expended a small amount, so, um, I had originally put them in the equipment line, but I think it's more appropriate to take them out and consider, um, looking at them in the one cent reserve where it is currently housed.
Coming out at 71350539.
Correct.
And you're going to be, you're going to be in maintenance 39.
And in, and also the Jeep, I added. He had the Jeep, um, down in a, in a one cent request, but that was not considered in one cent seventeen, so I put it into that 39. Eighty?
Radios and everything else have to go into it.
So, Mr. Chairman, is it okay to move those gravel pits out of this line, and when we come around to the one cent discussion, address it then?
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, as long as we, if you don't drop them, then protect two of them to get it.
Yeah, we, we find one and put it in 24.
Yes.
So, can you, can you put it all in 24? It's going to 24 on the...
Or you're talking reserve?
Reserve is where it was. It was allocated, it was approved in reserve, so we, we have, that's okay, so we'll, we can have those conversations when we hit one cent tomorrow.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're fine. So in, um, the 39 account, I will have the 110,000, which is for the parking lot and the Jeep, unless you instruct me to remove something further at this time.
Just the parking lot and just the Jeep. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Just the parking lot and just the Jeep.
Correct, which is a total of 110. Also, Mr. Chairman, if you look on page two, the one cent funding, which kind of varies from the original, um, one cent seventeen schedule, that was approved in October, so if you don't mind, I'd like to discuss that when we, um, look at the one cent as a whole tomorrow. So if there's no further questions, we can move back to, uh, Road and Bridge Vehicle Maintenance, which is ending in 54.
Ken? I do have a question on that as far as motor fuels go in 8501. Can you tell me what they've expended so far? It's showing four, 486, 608.
Motor fuels to date, 578,456.
Five seventy-eight?
Five seventy-eight, 456 for motor fuels in Department 54. Under Road and Bridge, it'll be your second. Okay.
Any questions? Yeah, I was just looking at the previous year was, yeah. Right. You guys, you got anything else on this?
Looks expensive to me.
Anything else in there, Madam Clerk, for Road and Bridge?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got Parks, one cent, revisit equipment, some questions about the fair, and then some employee pay questions. Want to tackle another one? You want to call it and come back in the morning and finish up? I got, I got half that says they want to call it and one that says he wants to do one more.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. North, if we could, I think the next couple ones, there's going to be, um, we need to dive kind of deep in, into the few that we have left. And I'd like to do that fresh, if we could.
I agree.
And if you have a little bit of time today, kind of clean up your notes, if you might.
Sure.
Yeah.
Ken?
Tracy, how long do you think it'll take to go through the rest of them? Because I got to leave early tomorrow. I've got a meeting I got to be at.
Yeah, we're reconvened at 8:30 in the morning, so...
I think we should have the majority... Maybe, the majority of...
I need to leave by 11, until 11:15 at the earliest tomorrow.
Um, we might have a few stragglers, but then we can, you know, uh, schedule an hour or a couple hours. But we need to look at revenue also. So...
That's reasonable. I was asking, that's...
I'm not confident we'll get, we won't be done tomorrow.
Ken? All right, well, we'll adjourn for tonight and then reconvene tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.